Call tonight's meeting of the Monroe County Council to order. This meeting is for Tuesday, November 12, 2024. And I want to note for the record that here in the Naukew Hill Room, we have Councillor Iverson, Councillor Wiltz, Councillor Crossley, Councillor McKim, and I'm Trent Decker. Councillor Munson is still absent. And I think that's all I've got for now. As council members come, I'll add that to the announcements. Would everyone in the room please join me with a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Does anyone wish to amend tonight's agenda? Michelle, I'm seeing a note here that I need to note something on the record. And I can do that.
Or I can do that for you. It doesn't matter.
Why don't you do it? You're the expert.
On item 13B, with regards to amending the salary ordinance, the fund title should be Auditor's General Fund and not the Probation Department. So that was a typo on my.
Say that one more time slow.
Item 13B. The title should be for the fund should be Auditor's General Fund and not the Probation Department.
Yep. Okay. We've got it for the record. All right. Thank you so much. So noted. Awesome. So with that, counsel, if there is no other changes to the agenda, I will do a voice vote of councillors present on the agenda. All those in favor of adopting it as posted and as before you signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? It carries unanimous. Let's move on to public comment. And so this is going to be public comment for items that are not on tonight's agenda. We've got about, I think, 14 items. So if you have a comment from the public on an item not on the agenda, we'll recognize you. I'm going to give a time limit of three minutes per speaker. And those on teams, you just raise your hand on there and we'll get to you and we'll start here in the room. So in the room, if you have an item, go ahead and stand and come on up to this podium in the Naukew Hill. Okay, looking in the audience, I'm not seeing any on that. How about on teams? If you've got a comment on an item not on the agenda, raise your hand. While we wait, I just want to know all public comments are welcome before the county council and the Naukew Hill Room and really any public body that takes public comment. But that's my editorial. All right. Going once, twice. So we will move on to item number five, which is department updates. And this is a time when our wonderful department heads will report in if they've got anything. Limit it to about 10 minutes to two, pardon me, 10 minutes for each department wishing to do so. Do I have any departments wishing to do an update either in the Naukew Hill or on teams? Giving a look. Any departments? Okay. Seeing none. We will leave department updates. Okay. Let's move on to council liaison updates. Is there any councillor that wishes to offer an update from one of your liaison positions? All right. Is anyone's been since longer than I know? And that's okay. There's nothing wrong with that. Is there any comments from folks? All right. Seeing none. We'll move on to item number seven. This is the consent agenda and we'll have the motion.
Counsel. All right. We can laugh, y'all. It's okay. Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's consent agenda item for a category transfer and fund 8153-9623, harm reduction with $300 from the supplies category and $228.02 from the services category for a total transfer of $528.02 to the personnel category.
Second.
Are there any on the consent agenda item? Are there any questions from council? Looking all directions here. All right. Let me go to the public. If anyone in the public has a comment on the consent agenda items, just come forward to the podium here. The item can come forward to the podium here in the Naukew Hill or raise your hand on teams. All right. Seeing none. Back to council. Anything else? Looks like everybody's okay. Then let's go to roll call a voice vote. I can do that because we're all here right now. All those in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous for the consent agenda. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item eight, the Highway Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway Department's request for an additional appropriation and fund 1197-0000, Stormwater Management, in the amount of $1,500,000 in the Services category.
Second.
All right. We've got Ms. Lisa Ridge joining us via Teams. Ms. Ridge, I'll let you take it away.
Good evening. So we opened bids on October 30th for this project. So we would like to appropriate the funds at this time to move forward and award the project next week. The actual bids came in at 1.324. So a little bit under what we have asked to appropriate. The project should be completed in 2025.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's go to questions or comments from councillors. I know they're kind of looking through their packet still. Councillor McKim.
Just about how long do you expect the, or I guess what will there be a closure? And approximately, how long do you expect it to be?
I believe the contract is 120 days. However, like our Morse Creek project, so this was kind of broken into two phases. We actually are just finishing up the first part, Morse Creek. Paving on the rest of Morse Creek Road should end tomorrow. So it came in a lot less than 120 days. I think it was more like 40 to 50 days. But yeah, so probably April, we anticipate, starting after the winter season and then going, and like I said, they'll have 120 days to finish.
Thank you.
Stip Road is actually in my district. And I'm curious about how much of Stip Road is impacted by the work that you're doing? It says that you're raising the roadway and then replacing a bridge. Is it the bridge right there where the creek goes into the lake?
Yeah, so correct. And then we also, after that, we plan to do Stip Road the same way did we did Morse Creek Road. We'll finish that project, pave it. And then we will also send out bids for paving the remainder of Stip Road when that project's complete. Because we know that property owners have put up with a lot and the road is in terrible shape, I admit. But we held off until these two projects were built so we can pave them all at the same time so they could have a good finished project that'll last for years to come.
Thank you. I really appreciate your management of all of the things going on in the county roadwise. It's impressive. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions from Ms. Ridge? Well, one thing I just want to know is I always improve. I always appreciate the effort to go after the dollars and make these projects happen. You know, in the last couple of days, I've heard lots of grumbling from people, not on one of your projects, but going downtown and everything happening. But the converse of that is not having roads repaired and tires going flying off into ditches or people getting hurt and other things like that that we don't want when you're driving on a Monroe County road in the middle of the night. And so I always appreciate that these paving dollars turn into smoother roads, bridges taken care of, culverts managed, all those things that we want. All right. Anything else? Seeing none. Note for the record, Councillor Hawke is with us.
Did they mention watching out for the deer? Is that what they were talking about? Because we need to get that warning out. There's too many people who do not know we have to drive slow and watch out for the deer because they are out there.
That's true.
And drive slow, but they run fast.
All right. Any other comments? Okay. Let's go to public comment on this item, item number eight. And if you have public comment, come forward here in the Naukew Hill to the podium or raise your hand on teams. All right. Seeing no public comment, we will go to a roll call vote.
Councillor Wiltz?
Yes.
Councillor Deckard?
Yes.
Councillor Crossley?
Yes.
Councillor Hawke? Councillor McKim?
Yes.
Councillor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
I think that's it for you, Ms. Ridge. So thank you. Let's move on to item number nine. This is a request from Aviation.
Counsel, I move to approve the Aviation Department's request for an additional appropriation and fund 8108-0000, Project 39, Runway 17, Lights and Sinage, in the amount of $20,556.97 in the Services category.
Second.
Please, just wanted to add, please note that the cash fund-to-fund transfers were approved October 28th and are scheduled to be completed soon for this fund.
So we've got a motion for us. In a second, we'll go to Carlos Lavery, who also joins us via Teams this evening.
Good evening. And I do want to second the deer warning. Just about an hour ago, I came very close to hitting a very massive deer who was just in the middle of the day crossing the road. So let's get back to business, though. Yeah, the airports requesting an additional appropriation for Project 39, Runway 1735. This is that project that I just keep coming back for. Project 39, Runway 1735 Lighting Project in the amount of $20,558.97. This additional appropriation will cover the fund-to-fund transfer that was approved at the October 28th meeting.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lavery. We'll go to comments, questions from council for this aviation request. Seeing no comments or questions, we will next go to public comment on item number nine. If you have them, please come to the podium here in the Naukew Hill Room or raise your hand on teams. All right. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Councillor Hawke? Yes. Councillor Iverson? Councillor Deckard?
Yes.
Councillor Wiltz?
Yes.
Councillor Crossley?
Yes.
Councillor McKim? Motion passes unanimous.
Mr. Lavery. Let's go to item number 10 on the agenda, a request from the Commissioners.
Counsel, I move to approve ordinance 2024-54, approving the purchase of a property adjacent to the county-owned property at the northwest corner of I-69 and State Road 46.
Second.
All right. We've got a motion in a second. We want to welcome Angie Purdy from the Commissioners' Office as well as Jeff Cockrell from County Legal. And we'll welcome you to open us up with some comments.
Yes, this is an agreement that the Commissioners approved at a, I believe it was their meeting last week. The property owner has signed off on the agreement. And according with state law, the county council also has to approve the terms and conditions of the agreement. Prior to it being formalized, the agreement is for the purchase of land in North Park, which is basically at the corner of I-69 and State Road 46, back in the little area back there, just northwest of that corner. The county owns a lot of property in that area that we purchased for the, what is eventually going to be a quarry park. The purchase price is $11,375,000. This is for intended purpose of this purchase. It's for the justice facility, including the courts and all the related accoutrements. We've talked about this property, this process, this a lot. So I don't want to go into too many details. I am aware that there were a couple of questions from one of the council people about some of the related costs that are in this document. One is there is a shared cost for a roadway in the document. I talked with Paul Satterly and we estimated, or he estimated, that roadway would cost between $400,000 and $800,000. Again, that would be a shared cost with the seller. So I thought that would be something you'd want to know. I've also reached out to the South Central Regional Sewer District about the capacity of the plant and whether, and what would be the cost. A lot of that depends on what we put there, of course. If we do not exceed their current capacity, it would cost us a hook-on fee of $440,000 in that area. It's anticipated that we would have to expand that plant, though. I don't want to, I don't want you to think that that's not anticipated. And so I asked him for estimates as what it would cost to double the capacity of that plant. That current plant's capacity is, and I'm going to use the daily figure. There's also an overflow figure that I don't have on the top of my head. But the current capacity is 100,000 gallons. If we doubled that to 200,000 gallons, he indicates that the cost, he would estimate that cost to be somewhere between $25 and $30 a gallon, which would be a $2.5 to $3 million increase. Again, that's, that we're kind of targeting a worst-case scenario with that. But I don't want you to think that that cost isn't there.
All right. Thank you very much. And thank you for continued apprising counsel of around questions and processes. I know legal has been really helpful with that, as well as the Commissioners when we had a joint discussion about locations. So I think that was fruitful for us to talk openly about some items. All right. I'm going to go to comments or questions from councillors. I've got Councillor Hawke first.
Yes. And I was at a meeting this morning with Gallisville folks. And one of the questions that was asked of me was would the court systems be more visible from the road rather than the jail? In other words, where will the court system be? Will it be closer to the road, closer to the highway?
I guess I would assume, and Scott Carnegie's in the audience and he can throw stuff at me if he thinks I'm answering it incorrectly. But the, but I believe the goal is to have it, the court systems at kind of the, closer to the Hunter Valley Road, which if we looked at the site, the, we're buying property off, that would come off 46 onto Hunter Valley, that it would be closer to, and really more visible from the 46 as you're driving by as well. And that the jail would be more tucked away as kind of outside more of the direct line of sight. And I think that's for both aesthetic reasons, as in people are going to come and they're going to want to go to the courts. People who are entering that area will want to go to the courts and those related facilities, whereas law enforcement would have more of the entry and need to utilize the jail portion of it. I met with Mr. Carnegie last week and we were talking about having maybe even a one single entrance. And to the right, you would go to the jail side. And to the left, you would go to the court side. So from a person visiting the facility, actually going there, I think it would be equally accessible.
And there's also, there's also the outlots that will be primarily on the roadside.
Also, when I discuss this, and thank you for addressing the concerns I had, could you, could you tell me if you did go ahead and change the dates of which they would have to respond because those weren't correct in the offered to purchase?
Well, at last week's meeting, at the Commissioners' meeting, we amended the agreement. And it should be the agreement in your packet that we're supposed to have their, their initial thoughts on planning by December 1st. Where previously it was November 1st. So that should, that was changed through the Commissioners' and the Commissioners' meeting. And let me see if that in your packet. Yes, your packet under, in section 3.5, it does have the December 1 date.
Okay, so it's, it's different from when you and I discussed it. I mean, we knew it had to be changed. I just want to make sure.
Correct. We amended it and I made sure your staff had the updated.
Okay. And further, well, I'll discuss the reason for my vote before we take the vote. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councillor McKim.
Just to confirm that, so the cost of the roadway could be as mu, our cost could be as much as $400,000.
Correct.
And the expansion of the wastewater treatment plant could be as much as $3 million.
And I guess I would just, the cost of the shared roadway, right? We haven't done design. We haven't designed it out. There may be much more infrastructure, such as roads and all those kinds of things that are involved with this project than what's in this document. We just know that there's going to be a shared roadway that will help the two, the outlots, I assume there'll be more than one, the outlots that will also serve this property. And so we discussed how we were going to share the cost of that road segment.
So I guess what I'm getting at is just to confirm that all of these costs have already been included in the notional budget and the soft costs of the notional budget that we provided when we decided on the tax rate and so on.
I believe so.
Over here to Councillor Iverson.
I want to start off by talking about an issue that Councillor Hawke raised. And I asked staff, could you please share the map found on page 24 of today's packet? I'm a visual learner and sometimes seeing things helps me out.
Just bring it down just a little bit.
TSD, if you were able to slightly lower that middle light facing the council up there, that'd be appreciated if you can do that or someone can do that.
Just bring it down just a little bit.
All right. That is the one. To Councillor Hawke's point, that's going to be hard for folks to see, isn't it?
I'm trying. Hold on.
Maybe you can zoom.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle. Can you come back towards the entrance into this property off of the highway? And let's see, could you stop right there? Is it, is my understanding correct that the road that we are discussing, that Mr. McKim mentioned, a $400,000 shared cost, mind you, is this one displayed on the screen?
No, it's not. It's actually, if she scrolled down a little bit more, it's that yellow.
It's the completion of the road on through.
It's that yellow curved line.
I see. Yeah.
Right. The one above is Hunter Valley, right? And that's already going to.
The one, the one to the, on the left side is Hunter Valley. The one on the top of the map would be, I think it's Stony Brook. I think that's the name of the road. And that is, those two are in existence today.
Right.
Correct.
I don't be able to see if they don't turn that off.
I made the request, so we'll do our best here.
And then the, what you were saying earlier was that the orientation of, there you go.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that a lot. The orientation of what you were talking about is that buildings for ease of access will be along the Hunter Valley Road. Is that what I heard you earlier? Assuming you don't get things started, you.
I am, I am doing the best I can because I'm not the designer. But I think the goal would be to have the more public use buildings, such as the courts, such as the probation prosecutor, would be along the Hunter Valley Road, which is the one going on the left side.
That's right.
So.
The one highlighted, yeah.
Yeah. And that the jail would probably be further back along Hunter Valley or using more of where Stony Brook is.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm not the designer.
President Decker, may I ask one more?
Please.
On the contract, which, thank you for including that, is exhibit one on this agenda item. The closing date is listed as anytime before June 1st, 2025. But the next clause, of course, talks about any extensions that might be needed. Are we anticipating June 1st as a good benchmark for us to keep in mind?
My hope is we haven't done well before June 1st. June 1st is also the deadline for the planning portion of this because we have to get a rezone before we're going to purchase the property. It's really more tied to making sure that gets through and then closing thereafter. June is, we wanted to have a safe timeline so that we could get that done.
Sure. Okay. That's all for now.
Thank you very much. We'll go to other comments or questions. Councillor Hawke.
Yes. When I was reviewing the offer, it was saying for, it wasn't specific about what was going to be placed there. There was something rather, you know, vague. You want to go to that paragraph and look at what, I think we discussed that when I called you?
McKim mentioned, a $400,000 shared cost, mind you, is this one displayed on the screen?
No, it's not. It's actually, if she scrolled down a little bit more, it, it's that yellow.
It's the completion of the road on through.
It's, it's that yellow curved line.
I see, yeah.
But the one above is Hunter Valley, right? And that's already going to.
The, the one, the one to the, on the left side is Hunter Valley. The one on the top of the map would be, I think it's Stony Brook. I think that's the name of the road. And that is, those two are in existence today.
Right. That's it.
Correct.
I don't be able to say if they don't turn that off. Just give me a mic.
I made the request, so we'll do our best here.
And, and then the, what you were saying earlier was that the orientation of, there you go.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that a lot. The, the orientation of what you were talking about is that buildings for use of access will be along the Hunter Valley Road. Is that what I heard you earlier? Assuming you don't get things started, you.
I am, I am doing the best I can because I'm not the designer, but I think the goal would be to have the more public-use buildings, such as the courts, such as the probation prosecutor, would be along the Hunter Valley Road, which is the one going on the left side.
That's right.
So.
The one highlighted, yeah.
Yeah. And that the, the jail would probably be further back along Hunter Valley, or using more of where the, where Stony Brook is.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm not the designer.
President Decker, may I ask one more?
Please.
On the contract, which, thank you for including that, is Exhibit 1 on this agenda item, the closing date is listed as anytime before June 1st, 2025, but the next clause, of course, talks about any extensions that might be needed. Are we anticipating June 1st as a good benchmark for us to keep in mind?
I, my hope is we haven't done well before June 1st. June 1st is also the deadline for the planning portion of this, because we have to get a rezone before we're going to purchase the property. It's really more tied to making sure that gets through and then closing thereafter. June is, we, we wanted to have a safe timeline so that we could get, get that done.
Sure. Okay. That's all for now.
Thank you very much. We'll go to other comments or questions. Counselor Hawke.
Yes. When I was reviewing the offer, it was saying for, it wasn't specific about what was going to be placed there. There was something rather, you know, vague. You want to go to that paragraph and look at what, I think we discussed that when I called you?
Are you talking about what we're putting in, or what?
Right. What we're putting in. It said for the jail, it might have said for court systems, and then it was like some, you know, open-ended whatever. So I thought it might be good to, to see what, what other things that might be planned to place on the ground.
Is that Section 3.7, maybe?
And I think that's probably it. What we've put in here is that we intend to use the property for the justice complex, and that we will not utilize the jail infrastructure until we have bids accepted for the courtrooms. Now, I think the plan is to do that all at once, but we wanted to give as much flexibility as we possibly could, because the world's crazy.
There's more in that paragraph. Do you see, do you see the rest of it? It was, there's like something else added on there.
Section 3.7 says purchasers use of the property, purchasers intend to use the property for a justice complex, which includes a new county jail and court space. The county intends to complete the jail structure first, however, it will not operate the facility until contracts are awarded for courtroom construction.
Maybe there was something else in another portion, but matters not.
Other comments or questions from counselors? And what, what I want to offer to you counselors, I'm going to do two things here. I'm going to see if you have any more initial comments at this point, and then I'm going to open it up for public comment on the item, take public comment, and then come back for one more round of counselor comments, and then call it from there. Counselor McKim.
Just one more question. Do you know how much of the capacity of the wastewater treatment plant is being used up currently?
I believe.
1,000 gallons a day.
A second.
If my math is correct, they're using about 24,000 to 25,000 gallons per day right now. If we did, they, they, their calculations initially were pushing it up just for a 400-bed jail based upon the state's estimates, that would have pushed it up to about 72,000 gallons per day.
And there's being South Central Region, so it is.
Right. So when you look at that paragraph that, that you just read off, part of it said the justice complex. And so this, I'm now remembering our conversation, what all is included with what is called the justice complex? I mean, do we plan to move community corrections to, you know, which portions of the justice system will be moved to this facility? And, and further, hopefully, when we're looking at the budgets and the fiscal responsibility, what has been planned for, as we're moving those facilities, and then we still have facilities that will be sitting there, perhaps vacant for we don't know how long, we're going to have, of course, double expenses for utilities and so forth. But do we plan to sell all of those facilities that we are leaving behind, or do we plan to put other uses in those buildings? And have we even discussed what we plan to do with our present justice building? Do we plan to implode it, or do we plan to use it for something? Is, is that even, has that even been discussed with, with our planned projections of, of expenses that we will have as we go along the way? And maybe you think that has nothing to do with purchasing and moving forward with this facility, but I think it is a part of the full range. And hopefully, there's been meetings on this, and I would not like to think that we're going to leave a lot of buildings sitting vacant downtown Bloomington almost overnight. That, that might not be what we would want to have happen. But I just, I'm sharing that as a concern, and if those are things have already been addressed, I thank you. If they've not, hopefully, they will be soon.
I think the intent, to answer the first part of the question, the intent is to move all the justice-related components to this new site. That's prosecutor, public defender, the courts, the, the part of the clerk's office that relates to the courts. I think there's still a conversation of, should the election remain downtown, that, that component? There's also a, you know, community corrections. You know, I think there's still a conversation about, i- is there a component of that needs to be, remain downtown? Those are kind of outside the legal departments in our bailiwick, but I think the intent is to move those out of downtown. And, and of course, that would clear up space for the buildings downtown. I'm not sure if there's been any decisions made on what should happen to those buildings downtown. I think there has been a conversations, I've been a part of, there's been a general feeling that we really shouldn't hang on to those buildings and those facilities unless we have a purpose for them. And right now, we don't see what those purchase purposes are, other than potentially the Johnson Hardware Building remaining for election purposes. You know, the showers building will, does not have any of those departments or components in it, so that would, that's not affected. The health building's really not affected. This building's really not effective, but, but everything else would be. Noticed decision's been made on that, and I don't anticipate any kind of really firm final, really thoughts on those buildings until after our designers and our estimators have gone through and done the design and figured out, hey, this is exactly what we can do, and, and here's who we can move. Because you, you got to remember, once construction starts, we expect this to have a 30-month construction cycle, so we are going to have two and a half years to look at those issues and, and execute a plan. So, I mean, we're, we're still pretty early in the game as far as reusing the current facilities. If you want my opinions on what to do with the justice building, or the Charlotte T. Little Justice Center, I would be more than happy to tell you that I don't think we should own that the day after we move out. But I, but again, between now and then, we might come up with a plan on how to better utilize that facility, and if so, great. I'm having trouble picturing it.
So there's no plan whatsoever to use it for like a work release center or something of the sort?
Again, not at this point, but if that, that is the will of, of what people want to do with it, we'll certainly be able to, to look at it for those purposes.
Thank you.
I appreciate you attempting to tackle as much of that question as possible, and as you were talking, it occurred to me, as I sat here, I have, we passed a budget, was it last week or the week before? It was two weeks.
Seems like ages ago.
It was this year.
It seems like 1946, but we passed that budget, and I think I said the night we passed it, that we would immediately start correcting things on that budget, or people would tell us about it. And as I sit here tonight, I had a fresh meeting today. I have six departments right now that are looking for additional funds come January that I don't know quite where that is or happening. And so every budget, every process is a continued conversation of figuring kind of that out. On our end, I, I, I don't like it's holding on to property more than we absolutely necessarily need that, but at the same time, if there's purposeful meaning, I think hearing an open discussion in the public between the bodies, just as we've gotten to this moment, is probably our best bet. So much work ahead on that. Other comments or questions? Let's go to the public on this. This is one that has been well before the public in a way that they, certain members of the public have, have feelings, and I think it's their time now and not ours for now. So let's do that. On teams, if you have a comment on this item, raise your hand, and I'll go to you. If you're in the room and you have a comment, know that all comments are always welcome here in the NatU Hill Room, and we want to hear from you as we figure out these decisions. Yeah, Michelle, did you have something?
We do have, we do have someone online.
All right. We'll go first, if you're in the room, we've got Commissioner Jones. I'll ask you to state your name for the record, but welcome to the podium.
Save me some time. I'll be very quick. I just want to assure you that we have not made any decisions at all about the current justice building. We're well aware of the state of that building, and it seems unlikely that it would be reused as is at all. But whatever happens, we have every intention of discussing it publicly with the council, including the council in that decision, which is going to be an important, big decision. Thank you.
All right. We will now go to teams, and I've got Commissioner Givens there, and we will promote her, whatever we need to do, and then we'll go back to comments here.
Hi. Thanks for letting me speak tonight. As everybody at that podium knows, on Tuesday, October 22nd, we had a joint session between the commissioners and the council, and I want to thank you all for the thoughtfulness that you've put into it, both on the 22nd and tonight. As you know, the commissioners are, are strongly in favor of North Park, the sheriff is in favor of North Park, and I had the sense a couple of weeks ago when we met that members of the coun, council had also come to the conclusion that North Park was going to be at least the best of our current options for moving forward, and that there isn't, that there is a need to be, to move forward on this. I think Councilmember Crosley said we need to move expeditiously. Others, Council Wilt, Counselor Wilt said that this is a more environmentally responsible location, and so I look forward to having your support on this item tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll return here into the room, and so our next speaker, if you want to come forward to the podium.
Good evening. Excuse me. Good evening. My name is Joe Davis, and I represent the taxpayer objection petitioners, and we strongly dissuade the purchase of this property. Yes, it is true that we do need to take action as far as creating a better justice facility. We already own the most preferable, most sustainable location, which is located on south, south downtown, between the existing convention center and the bus station and south of Third Street. There is a very, very large publicly-owned property right there, which is perfect for this application. As we heard tonight, the purchase of this property in North Park just opens up a Pandora's box of spending the taxpayers' money, which we don't have currently, which we're going to have to appropriate through bonds. And the purchase price is $11.375 million. The wastewater treatment plant upgrade is another $4 million, and we just heard that $400,000 to $800,000 are necessary for a shared highway that will, or a shared roadway that will have to be built. This brings us to a total of well over $16 million. This is a terrible time to invest $16 million. The price of money is still expensive right now, and the, not only that, but in the contract that has been in the packet, it says the due diligence period ends on the 1st of November. Well, that's passed. It says that the contract is null and void, if not executed by September 30th, 2024. Well, that period is, is passed, so it is null and void. This doesn't make any sense. It's probably, most likely, a dramatic underestimation of the cost of the roadway, because after all, there'll have to be a, a new stoplight right there, which is going to slow people down. There were also, from what we've heard, there's going to be sort of a side road access that'll be necessary to get to the, the courts and the other justice building, sort of camp, the justice campus buildings that will be outside of the jail. So this is just a very poor use of the taxpayers' money. This should not go forward. We should pump the brakes on this, not, not pump the brakes, we should pull the emergency brake on this and not commit the public to throwing good money after bad, because it's, not only will the purchase have to take place, but all, there'll be a shared road cost. Then, how are we going to sell that road once we sell that property in the future if it does get purchased? Because the county has no need for it. No need for it. So let's not move forward on this. Let's go back to the drawing board where we already have the perfect property located downtown. We'll solve many of these issues that everyone brings up.
We are at time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Go to more comments on teams. If you have them, raise your hand. I see a hand raised, so we'll go to our next speaker. All right. Next speaker, if you can unmute, or TSD, if you can unmute, or whoever's unmuting, so that we can get your public comments.
You have mic permissions. Lee.
All right. We could hear you just then, so if you want to go ahead, you may. We'll give this a second until this is remedied, so whoever needs to unmute, wherever they need to do it, we will wait. TSD, any advice on this one, or what's our status here? How can I help?
The person with their hand up has mic permissions. They've been elevated.
On their end, basically.
It's on their.
They need to unmute.
It's Lee, right? Lee, can you try unmuting, and, and let's see if that.
Oh, yeah, it does change all the time. Soft likes to move things around on teams all the time.
Working well for them tonight. I would say for Lee to call my phone, but it is dead, so now apples join the mess.
Is there a way that we can turn on chat so that maybe folks that are, because in the past, if a person has had an issue, we've been able to chat, and they've been able to send in an email, but I can't even do that because chat is turned off.
Have to start over to do that, but I don't.
Restart the meeting?
This person.
Okay. Caller, our, caller, sound like Phil Donahue. Our, Lee, our folks are saying that we Our, Lee, our folks are saying that we've got to have an unmute on you. It will not let me unmute, she says. Sounds like Mr. Davis has got her on the phone. Let's try this out. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Just one second, let me... Lee, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, go, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Lee Grunthefer. I use a Mac, and Microsoft Teams doesn't work well for me, and I've had trouble unmuting on all the county meetings. I have a screenshot of what's happening, and I've turned it into TSD, but there's been no resolve. So I'm sorry for the delay. I did want to say that, as I've emailed, I believe that this is the wrong path forward because it encumbers money for these buildings that go on this property, this contract does. And also, the contract that's been advertised does not have the correct dates in it. It does have the November 1st dates and December 1st dates in it. And I, I think that there's no reason to move forward with this until some of these extra costs that have not been appropriated and have not been thought about are more well-defined, especially the costs surrounding moving all the justice system components. And I'm not just talking about the financial costs, I'm talking about the cost to the people who are forced to use this system, who will have to move themselves somehow to North Park every day. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and, and thank you for your patience as we got you in there, and we'll keep working on all of our technology. Five years ago, we were doing none of this, like this, and so it's leaps and bounds in figuring it out. Any other comments from the public? Now's your time. Come forward in the NatU Hill or raise your hand on Teams. Going once, going twice. I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment. I'll return this to council for your comments on the adoption of this resolution. Councilor Iverson.
I will kick things off. I want to express my support for ordinance 2024-54 for two reasons. The first reason is timing. If we do not act, we will have other people coming in and doing this for us, and it will be more expensive. I believe that not only this council's actions to pass the resources that it's going to take to do this, as well as our actions tonight alongside the county commissioners speaks loud and clear that we want to move this forward in a timely manner. My second point, and the reason why I support this, is because I think this is going to move forward the key points made by the public in the Justice Fiscal Advisory Committee, and those were that we need to be working on reentry programs, community corrections, diversity, equity, and inclusion, treatment, and I think those areas are going to be improved with this land purchase this evening. I also think this moves us forward in terms of other items that folks have been asking about, which is constitutional compliance of our building, architectural integration with our community, as well as key environmental concerns as this county moves forward with its climate resiliency plan. For those reasons, I think that is the right time, and indeed the imperative given to us by the public that we move forward positively on this ordinance. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Iverson. Other comments from the council? Councilor Crossley.
Thank you. We've come a long way, and obviously, we still have a lot to go in a lot of this, but this is the main thing that we were tasked to do. Has it been contentious at times? Yes. Has it been messy at times? Absolutely. But I, I think, I appreciate the fact that we have been able to have the conversation that we had a few weeks ago with the commissioners and the council. I think we have done our due diligence. We've tried really hard to look at a lot of different properties. We've had some cooperation, we've had not some good cooperation, and it's not just with our county government. I appreciate the fact that the commissioners actually listened and, you know, looked at the Vernal property, and I will say a couple of weeks ago, and listening to that meeting, I said it then, and I'll say it again for this larger part of the conversation, is that it's just not going to work. And again, as we've talked about and as we've seen, and I don't want to pick on them, but they're the prime example of what won't work when you first open it, is the new hospital. We will be doomed from day one if we decide to go on, you know, different, if we decided to pick, for example, Vernal, and that happened, we would have been doomed on day one. We already know that Ken Fox said, mess around, find out. You know, if you, you pick that, choose other words to put in there, but you get what I'm saying. We don't want to mess around, and we don't want to find out at all. I think that would be too costly and dollar-wise, and human lives, and just a lot of different things. I'm glad we are coming to the end of this, because I think a lot of us have said in different meetings that, you know, nobody feels good about this, whether you want to believe it or not. But at the end of the day, I think I can go home and I can feel better and feel uncomfortable in knowing that we've done what we've tried to do. We're not going to make everybody happy, because if we made everybody happy, that's a cult-like, and we already know what cults look like. But that being said, I say all that to say that I feel comfortable with North Park. It took me a while to get to this point, but I am here, and I've heard from constituents and all over and again, we're not going to make everybody happy. We're not going to make everybody happy. I'm sure people on the Zoom will send me an email or find some way to contact and say didn't like it, but at least we know that we had this conversation out loud, we've allowed this to continue to go on, but time is of the essence, and time is money, and we, we have to continue to move forward. The only other thing that I would say is, yes, we do need to figure out what we are going to do with other buildings, and I will continue to say this with all ten toes down and every five-foot frame of my body, is that I do think that while we're thinking about, you know, what soon-to-be-old buildings will look like, I would like to see something where we are talking about a treatment facility, where we can have Iraq or somebody else come in to help us with this process along the way. I, I really want to stand firm on my, my belief and my hope, so if that's something that we can do with the soon-to-be-old buildings, I would love to see that happen, but I am in favor of it. Got to move on, moral of the story. We don't want to mess around and find out.
I'm going to go to Councilor McKim next, and I want to make a note. As chair, I will close with the last comment after councillors have had their fill, and then we'll go to a vote, just so you know where this is kind of heading. Councilor McKim.
Mr. Cockrell, I just, I wanted to see if you had any response to the concern about the dates.
Yes, I do. The, when we looked at the minutes from the commissioners' meeting where they initially approved this, they had amended the execution date from September 30th to November 15th, so I would ask that you guys include that in your motion. Also, the, as far as the due diligence, we had phase one, phase two, we've had our geotech report, we, we had everything we typically would do prior to, to when this was executed. So we didn't, we felt comfortable with leaving that kind of November 1st date that we were looking at in August, because we, we didn't have a couple of the phase, we didn't have the phase two back yet, and we wanted to make sure we had that back in time. So we had all the, we had all the documentation, all the due diligence that we were going to do prior to executing this contract, and so we did not feel the need to, to mess with that date at all.
So it's just the execution date that needs to be amended?
November 15th.
Okay, council, I move we amend the motion on the floor to adjust the 11.4 execution date to November 15th, 2024, to match the date that the commissioners have already adopted.
Second.
And we've got a motion and a second on this discussion on the amendment. Any discussion? All right, let's do a voice vote on the amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, all unanimous. All right, we're back to the underlying motion here and questions. Councilor McKim.
I'm sorry, and I just, I did want to make just a brief comment. You know, Commissioner Givens said this is the best of our current options, and, and I, that's the way I feel, you know? If we could go, go in our Wayback machine, go back 10 years maybe, I think Hopewell would have been the ideal place. I, I don't think there's any purpose in discussing that property across from the convention center. That is far too small. I wish that had been nipped in the bud a long time ago, because it's just not, that discussion is not helpful, and that is not a useful, not, not, not a useful piece of property for what we need to do here. But yes, Hopewell would have been ideal if we had, you know, if we had the ability to have, have done this before, the city invested so much in, in the planning process for Hopewell. I also would have liked to have seen Thompson, but we have the, you know, we know about the electrical line delays, and I think the more we learn about the property, the less desirable it, it becomes. I do hope that the commissioners will strongly consider and move forward on selling that property as soon as possible. You know, we've had too many kind of false starts in, in using the Thompson properties. A great idea, we're going to do something there, and then it winds up falling through. We just need to divest ourselves of it. But that said, I do think that the North Park is the best of our current options, and we need to move forward, so I'll certainly be voting yes.
Next on my list, I have Councilor Hawke.
One of our options that I have said repeatedly is that we should have brought into consideration the property at Fullerton Pike. As, as a reminder, when we first started this back how many, how long ago, there was a committee put together, a group of people, to find, locate properties and suggest which ones they felt was the best, and that group said Fullerton Pike. And it, and all of the council members, 100%, supported Fullerton Pike, as well as the county commissioners. Now, at that time, under a different city administration, it was like a couple of years ago or so, the city was not in favor of us moving that there, because it's on city-controlled property through planning and zoning. However, since that time, we have a different city administration, and they had sent the message out that they would be willing to work with us on whatever project we would, whatever location we would decide. I'm really dismayed that we didn't, as a group, at least inquire, and all I've heard is, well, the city turned us down. Well, yes, that was two years ago. Lives changed since then, I think I've gained a few pounds, and maybe other people haven't, but I'm just saying, things change in two years' time. So I'm disappointed that didn't happen. I have said from the beginning, when the meeting was held in the fire station in Ellisville, that the community there did not support having the jail located at North Park, and for that reason, of course, I won't be supporting it. I made the commitment then. I will, I will just say this much, that, you know, it's clear, it has the support, and it is going to pass. What I can say is that Ellisville is a resilient community. I'm sure that they will come together and try to make lemonade out of the lemons they are being handed. And it, it seems to me that there could have been a more gathering of neighbors rather than just the one meeting at the Ellisville Fire Department. It happened to be a very bad storm that night, and there were not as many people there as, as would have been there had we worked at this, but clearly, the commissioners wanted it at North Park from the beginning, from the get-go. So I look forward to working with Ellisville folks, and you can say all you want, this isn't in Ellisville, but you ask the people in Ellisville if they feel like it is, because it is very close. It's very close, a walking distance to where I think they'll work, is walk to, is probably the filling station there on the corner, very near where I live. But nevertheless, we will all work together, and hopefully, this will just mean that those folks who perhaps work in the justice system will, will recognize that Ellisville is the place that we say welcome home, and we are willing and able and welcome new neighbors to come, and we're building new houses, and we're growing our economy, and we're just very proud of our local community, and we will just work as best. I would really like it very much if the county would show the respect Ellisville is due. You know, they've poured with the city, I guess, maybe they've decided to quit coiling with the city, and they just want to start coiling with Ellisville. And I don't think that's productive, not for the county, nor for our growing, growing small town of Ellisville, which is no longer small. So I won't be voting in favor of this. I have made my commitment, and when I make a commitment, I stick with it. Thank you.
Councilor Wiltz.
Thanks. As everyone knows, this is not my first choice of property, of scope of project, location. However, I'm a strong believer in advocacy first and compromise to wrap it up. And, and I think that my colleagues have stated it already, that we did due diligence in looking at a variety of options, and we can't turn back the clock, believe me. I, it's not lost on me that it was about two years ago that we found out it would take two years to make a property better, and yet here we still sit, but bygones. I think any number of properties could have, would have, should have, and this is the one before us. This is the one that, of the current options, as said earlier, is the most developable with the least amount of environmental impact, according to the studies that were done, and that means a lot. So my period of advocacy for other properties and locations is over, and I am fully into compromising to move this project forward, so I will vote for the North Park location.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate councillor's discussion, I appreciate comments from the public, and many comments that came prior to this meeting over the many months and weeks that this has all been discussed. I appreciate that we're at a moment now where we can come to a decision on something, and every time we make a decision, there are folks that are happy with it and folks that are not happy with it. But I hear from a lot of people in the community that talk to me about the jail issue, and they sort of do this. They sort of, when you talk about, well, the commissioners and, and us, we're talking about this, well, the sheriff wants this, well, this is going, they kind of get this blank stare at you, and that stare, what that stare is, for people that read nonverbals, that stare is them humoring someone who's talking to them about more consternation and not talking about getting things done. And people are overwhelmed by the simplest things not getting done in local government at times. Now, I will say, Councilor McKim and I were at a beautiful Veterans Day ceremony yesterday, and we're reminiscing over the last four years about things getting done, and where this term started about things that we would not necessarily bet our mortgage, they were going to get done. Tonight, I believe this is a thing towards getting something done that really truly matters in the public scheme. If we took no public comment into question other than the oaths that councillors took to the constitution of this state and to the United States to defend it and make sure that we have constitutional occupancy in our correctional facility and in our judicial process, if we did nothing else, that would be a task well-served. We will do that. We will do that, I believe, if I can read this vote right, I believe this will pass and we'll keep moving forward and then we'll deal with the issues tomorrow and the next big thing and, uh, we will deal with transit issues, which will need to be addressed. Later tonight on this agenda, we will enter in, I believe it's the first time the county's ever entered into an agreement with Bloomington Transit. And we will look at that 50 years from now and remember that that really wasn't that strange of a thing, but tonight we will end up celebrating that. The last thing I'll just say is, um, I struggle a lot with folks, um, getting wound up, and I know everybody's got their opinion, but people getting wound up about location and where this i- i- it goes and doesn't go, I sometimes struggle with that and I, I know that it is because as a kid, as I told the auditor earlier today, in this building, when this was actually a courtroom, uh, I stapled my hand over near where the women's restroom was because that's where my mom worked. And we were around all that as kids, she would do transcripts at night, we were around all that, I'd see people come by with prisoner, I, I saw all that stuff. Um, and I believe that we have some of them right here, some of the finest law enforcement officers trained to know what the heck they're doing and I don't, so I can appreciate that, who will, wherever this facility is and whatever configuration, whatever road it faces, doors doing east-west, north-south or downstairs, they will figure out what they have to do and then they'll come before bodies like this and say, I need a little more, more money to do that better. And that question and discussion will go on between them and councils probably next 30 to 40 years. And so I, I, I understand why folks get nervous about that, about a location. I hear you, I remember when Thompson and some of those discussions and then Vernal Pike and some of those discussions and now this one, which is two miles from Ellisville. I, I understand that. I will also say that historically, I always go to the history of things in this community and you all know where Cro- anyone watching here, right, you know where Kroger North is, right? Used to be Marsh North.
Oh, Marsh.
And then when that went in, incidentally, all the children and all the families around Arlington Elementary went after the commissioners in a letter campaign because that Marsh North was going to destroy life as we know it. They believed the commissioners were purposely planning this, it was going to destroy life as we know it. Now, if you go half a mile south of there, where we have a food desert, we would pay Marsh, now bankrupt, we would pay Kroger to put something, anything in there and have that. Management and time and things change over time. By the way, my wife is one of those people that signed a letter saying, my gosh, if you put this marsh in here, we're all going to die in Arlington Elementary. And I say this not to be facetious, I say this not to say I don't put myself in people's shoes, I do. Every vote I have, I do put myself in that shoe. I say this to say we will manage it, we will have new headaches, we'll have new needs tomorrow. And I think we've got to keep this moving before, as Peter said very well, a judge that doesn't live in Monroe County starts telling me where it goes and then we are done with our decision. And my heavens, what in the world would it look like? So with that, counsel, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke. Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Motion passes five to one.
Thank you very much. Let's go to item B on our agenda.
Counsel, I move to approve ordinance 2024-41, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds and ordinance 2024-42, an ordinance appropriating the general obligation bond projects, which include but are not limited to general administrative building and equipment improvements, park improvements including Flatwoods Park and Karst Athletic Complex, jail repairs, airport improvements, vehicles for highway department and maintenance purposes, generators, Highway and Youth Service Bureau, protective vests for the probation office, emergency sirens and all related improvements and the incidental expenses in connection with these projects.
Second.
All right. So we have Mr. Cockle here and Ms. Purdy, they've not left us yet. Take it away.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm here presenting the, the ordinance, it's drafted by our bond council and, you know, we review it every year. I think it looks similar every year, so I think you guys may even be comfortable with this form as well. I'll, I'll say that, you know, it, it passes the legal muster, but typically every question we get is about the projects, which is why Angie Purdy is here with me.
Okay, so, um, we were, uh, and we had, um, a number of other department heads, um, present, um, I think it was in September and it was a very long meeting, uh, and I think we were at the end of it. And so we had a number of people here who were, um, prepared to talk about, um, their needs, but, uh, the needs, this, um, bond is actually addressing is, as Commissioner Crossley had indicated, it's, um, equipment, it's building repairs, it's, um, Karst Athletic Complex, um, funding that's needed. There is, um, it's indicated, um, there's money for the, um, Flatwoods Park restroom project that I believe Parks was going to be, um, if they needed the money beforehand, would be reimbursing, um, the council or, uh, county general for that amount, um, but I think now we can probably just pay it directly from this particular bond if it passes. Uh, we've got, um, uh, highway dump trucks and, uh, generators, uh, roofs and, um, law enforcement vehicles to try to get our law enforcement back on, um, track to having, where Q, our Cumulative Capital Development, um, Fund can, um, support the needed, um, refresh cycle. And then emergency sirens for, um, our EOC as well as, uh, radios, and I believe that was something that Commissioner or Councilman Munson had requested or brought to our attention was the need for radios for the EOC, um, and then also a truck that would have a, an outfit for, for them. So those are the projects, it's all pretty much, um, I think the only real project, if you would, would be the, uh, Karst component, the rest of it seems to be equipment and things.
We'll go to questions, comments from counsel, I've got Counselor Hawke and then I'll go to McKim.
Yes, as many of you might recall, I often do not support, uh, bond projects, uh, because part of the discussion there that we have to sign saying that we don't have the money to do some of these projects and other funds, uh, I cannot truthfully say that this year because if we move forward, uh, with, uh, making sure that we have some kind of parity with law enforcement, with the city, that certainly would spend down, uh, some of our renewable cash resources. And so, uh, certainly that is an obligation we have, let's talk about, uh, not just what we want to do, but what we must do. And, uh, so for that reason, I will be supporting, uh, this bond issue. I do have a, a, another statement. First of all, there's so many things on there, when my daughter was here, uh, recently, we spent a couple of days just driving around, looking at our parks, spending time at Flatwoods, which, oh, that's so well-used and so loved. And, and all that's going on with Karst Park as well. And then we drove by and visited the airport and saw all that's going on there. Then we drove throughout the rest of the county and looking at some of our roads and some of the improvements that might need to be made, which of course takes equipment to do it. And, and so, uh, there's just a lot of things here that I think that we, we have to address. But one of the, it's a small question, but having to do with the generator for the youth shelter. Now, it's my hope that we are not waiting on some kind of bond situation to get that generator, that needs to be in there yesterday. And so, uh, because the last time we didn't have, uh, when we lost electricity and they were trying to figure out how they were going to feed the children that were there, they were without electricity, you know, in your own home, if you had a lot of young people in your home with no electricity. So I hope that if that's, if that needs to happen, that we just get at it, get it done, do some kind of reimbursement, whatever it is, we have an obligation to do that immediately. And I've said this before, so I guess no one cares until it's one of our children that we noticed, but I'm just, we, we really need to address that. At any rate, I will be supporting the bond.
Would you like to respond about the generator?
Sure.
We are not purchasing this generator until this bond is actually approved, but in the meantime, our maintenance is very diligent about getting a, um, a small generator up to YSB so that they are functional. So I just wanted to let you know that they're not, um, suffering and this will make it so that it will be an automatic, um, switch over to the generator as opposed to having our guys have to get out there and get them set up, so it will be much better.
They're not talking with you about that, I guess they had to go out and order pizzas and something because they had no way to fix a meal and, and the children were, there was no, so, okay, I'm hearing things that perhaps you aren't.
Yeah, I've not heard that.
Okay, I wasn't there.
Okay. Uh, Counselor McKim, I think you're next.
Thank you, um, I'm looking at Exhibit A, uh, in our packet and first of all, I don't see the radios in that Exhibit A. Now, I know we've cer- we've certainly talked about them and I'm happy to have them included, but I don't know if this was something that was amended after the document was added to the packet.
You advise, what is Exhibit A?
Do you see that, the same Exhibit A?
What page is that? This is not the correct one because that's when actually also, this is, this was, this was, this was the original one, um, that we, that was submitted prior to the September meeting, at the September meeting, we provided an updated, uh, and I've got it, it's in the notice that we had, that had been, uh, provided to the public and it includes, let's see here. ... and an amount not to exceed $3,100,000 to be applied on the cost of certain local public improvements located in the county, including but not limited to general administrative equipment improvements, airport improvements, park improvements, including improvements to rest, at Flatwoods Park and Karst Athletic Complex improvements, computers, camera equipment for county offices, jail repairs, two single axle dump trucks for the highway department, YSB generator, highway generator, roofing, protective vests for probation and LEO vehicles, all for maintenance purposes, emergency sirens for emergency management purposes, radios for emergency management and one emergency management vehicle and outfit and all related improvements and the incidental expenses in connection with these projects.
Okay, so yeah, the ver- the version that we have here must have been an old one and did not include the radio. The, the other question then that I have is, um, I don't quite understand what you mean about LEO vehicles all for maintenance purposes. That's kind of a...
That's not in the new language because that doesn't make sense.
Thank you. I've been trying to read it over and over again and...
Yep, nope, that's why it's not in the new language.
Okay. Counsel, I move we substitute, uh, the Exhibit A that was, uh, advertised to the public and then Ms. Purdy just read in place of the Exhibit A in our packet.
Second.
Got a motion and a second on this substitution. Any question or any discussion on the amendment? And so this, what we're substituting, my question is, that reflects what the public has seen?
Yeah, that's, that's what we're trying, we're trying to do and, and includes the radios in particular and...
That's what we want. All right, so we've got this motion before us, let's do a voice vote on it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It carries, unanimous, and we're back to the underlying motion. Uh, and I guess counsel comments or discussions? No? Anyone? I, um, I'll offer some and then I think we'll go to public comment unless there's anything else you all needed to add. I, I want to echo what, um, Counselor Hawke said, particularly about, um, Flatwood Parks. I'm very happy to always see them kind of coming into our mix. Uh, I was out there at Sunset for family pictures on, uh, maybe two weekends ago and I swear it looked like Kirkwood, there were so many people there. And that's not something you always see on that side of the county and it's getting utilized and I'm glad that the bond is thinking about that, thinking about the airport, I think this is the first time the airport has made an appearance on the bond. And I will always be happy about anything related to emergency management, so whether that is generators or thinking through it. We know every June, we learn more about being better with emergency management. And, um, I welcome those discussions and I'm glad to see us thinking through it. There was a time when counties couldn't think about these things and the bond gives us a vehicle to do some of that and so much more, such as, I mean, who could be against protective vests for probation officers, right? So these are some no-nonsense things that really truly make sense. All right. Seeing no other discussion, we'll go to public comment on item 10B. And if you have it, come forward here in the NatU Hill or raise your hand on teams. And seeing a hand. See, all right, we've got Vanessa Schmidt.
Hi, good evening, counsel. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to, since I'm here, I just wanted to kind of jump in and clarify as far as the, uh, generators at the Youth Services Bureau. So we truly appreciate maintenance being able to come and respond with the generators, but however, it does only power a fridge and freezer during that time and so we are still without electricity, hot water, the ability to use any of our kitchen equipment. Um, we also unfortunately have to run it outside for the exhaust fumes, which means we have to leave a locking external door open, so it does pose some safety risks for us. So I just wanted to clarify, since it seems like there may have been some, uh, different information.
And can I ask you a follow-up question? Does this fix that?
Yes, the automatic, the automatic generator that would kick on would power, um, all of this shelter and then one or two working rooms so that staff that still have to come in would be able to plug in computers and things like that, but we would be able to resume all of our normal services, have operations as usual with this new proposed generator.
All right, thank you so much for, for that. All right, we'll keep on public comment. Counselor Hawke, did you have a question?
Right, I'm just wondering, uh, is there a timeframe, uh, that, that generator can be, uh, purchased? I mean, when is the earliest we can move forward with that?
When we receive this money, which we should receive...
It, it should close early December, I mean, we could, we'll get, talking to vendors, seeing what it's, scheduling.
Richard's already done that, yeah, so he's already got something in play.
They've got lead times, we, we could work with them.
Just best track if we can.
We've got a couple of weeks here to get it to good. Okay, we'll go back to public comments and, uh, Mr. Davis, if you wanted to come forward.
Hello, excuse me, Joe Davis, uh, 30-year resident and, uh, representing the taxpayer objection petitioners. We have heard several times in the past from, uh, from various counselors, especially Counselor Hawke, that there are funds that the county currently possesses which could be utilized, uh, to pay, uh, the $3.1 million or the general appropriation, uh, for these, uh, items, these projects. It's, as I mentioned before, this is not a good time to borrow money. One should be looking at, if we have the current funds, how are they invested and what is their return? And if their return is, uh, not more than what the, uh, cost of borrowing this money is, then we should use those funds we already have as opposed to taking on more debt and obligating the taxpayer to even more of a commitment. So, the taxpayer objection petitioners strongly discourage the use of a bond. petitioners strongly discourage the use of a bond to, to fund these projects. The projects, I do agree, seem very worthy. However, we should be using our existing funds rather than taking on more debt. This is not a good time to take on debt. If we already have funds in the bank, let's use those funds. We will be money ahead in the long run, money ahead. Thank you very much.
All right. Other comments from the public. I'm looking to teams, going once, twice. Come back to the room. Once, twice. All right. We've heard from the public on this. Counsel, we will go next to a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. Let's next go to Item C.
Counsel, I move to approve ordinance 2024-53, an ordinance to approve and fix terms and conditions for the purchase of land with Monroe County and Southern Monroe Water Authority regarding, regarding an easement agreement.
Second.
All right. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, and I know the title of it, but we're not purchasing this easement. We are granting this easement to Southern Monroe Water Authority. This, the ground, what we are looking at is the ground around our Smithville Diamonds, which the, the county owns that property. There are portions of that property that are not utilized for their athletic programs. And they basically go unused. They do have a water tower in, on that property right now. This is an easement granting them the ability to put a, and I believe some of the Water Authority people are here and they can correct me where I'm wrong, to put in some kind of pumping station as well as to put another line that would run on the southernmost boundary of that property. Now, part of that construction work for that southernmost boundary may interfere with the playability of some of the fields there, but they're working, they're going to work with Smithville Diamonds to minimize any impact they have on their, their facilities. When we met with the authority, they had two purposes for this, but really the main purpose is to make sure that the water flow and the water supply towards the point has enough water in it that if there is a fire there, that they can respond to that during the summer, which is their peak time of use of water in that area. The commissioners felt that since this is a water authority that services the residents in the area and residents of Monroe County, that there wasn't any necessarily, they did not want to be reimbursed or paid for this easement. It is just to help them with that public utility. If you have any questions, I would be more than happy to answer them.
And welcome, Water Authority friends. Thanks for sitting through all this. You've got the patience of Joe back there. All right. Comments, questions from counselors. Counselor Hawke?
Yes, I'm delighted that people will come together and say, we have to do better about making sure when it's possible to have more water available in the case of a fire. I mean, we saw recently in Bloomington Township, just this past week, a family lost their home. And, and there was not a lot of, I think there was work that had to be done trying to make sure that they could get the proper amount of water flow for that. So to, to the extent that we can encourage the separate utility to show us where they need assistance and to see what we could do as a county to help them, because that's just a primary thing to do. The other thing is if there was be any way that they could also grow the ability to have more housing built in, throughout the county in different areas. I don't know just where that might be, but I, I know Cheryl Munson had many times suggested she'd like to see some senior citizen housing grow in, in her neighborhood area. So to the extent that we can work together and make this all happen, it's much appreciated.
Other comments, questions from counselors? This is a no nonsense one, right? More water, better those diamonds. Let's get her done. All right. Let's go to public comment. If you have any, you can come up here to the Nat U Hill podium and offer that or raise your hand on teams. And Water Authority friends, if you had anything you wanted to say, you'd be welcome, but you've been very patient back there. All right. Mr. Davis, you want to talk?
Yes, Joe Davis here. So the easement is going to negatively impact the public's land if it is granted. The Water Authority is its own corporation. Why are they not purchasing the easement? You know, the county is not getting any benefit necessarily. They're giving up and encumbering the property in perpetuity with a water line that comes in and a substation, pumping station. There is other land available that is obviously immediately around. Why isn't this easement being purchased through, through other properties instead of the county properties, the public property? This doesn't make any sense. We have to hold tight to our land to make sure that it is being utilized at its best and highest use. The county will no longer, if they give this easement away, will no longer have any authority to control the easement. Once an easement is established, it's easy to continue to enlarge that, develop it further as the easement holder will no doubt be doing. But these impacts are going to be permanent in perpetuity to the public's land. So it's more appropriate that the water district look at other properties surrounding. And if it is truly a need that is necessary, there should be some long-term compensation for the county, for the taxpayer, so that we know that we're not just giving away our firstborn child, so to speak. So, you know, certainly it's good, all of the suggestions as to what this water could be used for, but to permanently encumber the public's land is inappropriate. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Raise your hand on teams or come forth to Nat U Hill. All right. Let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's move on to Item D.
Counsel, I move to approve Resolution 2024-38, an interlocal agreement with Monroe County and Bloomington Public Transit Corporation regarding a new transit route.
Second.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, and just so there's not a confusion, it says Exhibit 1 at the top because this is actually an exhibit to a contract we have with Bloomington Transit. We are using ARPA funding for that project. So the ARPA, the, the contract that is in front of this is our standard language that we run through Baker Tilly in order to make sure we are in compliance with the, the federal rules. So that's why this is an Exhibit 1, which is an interlocal agreement, which will be executed the same way as the contract. The contract just authorizes the execution of it by both parties. And so what this does is it sets up what we, you guys provided ARPA funding for, which is the route from downtown out to the Cook Park 48 Ivy Tech area, hitting Simtra and coming back. This is the mechanism. The exhibit to this is the document that Bloomington Transit provided to us that we, that we evaluated to base upon whether we want to utilize our ARPA funding for. So it's a, it's a, each, it's an hour, every hour it'll hit each one of these, these stops. So it's, the route is an hour long. And so, and this is for them to operate it once an hour. And I think they're looking for additional funding from other sources to, to up that pace to more than once an hour, but that's what this agreement's for.
All right. Let's go to comments, questions from counselors. Counselor Wiltz?
Once, once an hour between the hours of, and on what days?
I believe it's Monday through Friday. Monday through Friday, it will start at the Transit Center at 6:40 in the morning and it will end at the Transit Center at six, or no, 5:30 in the afternoon, 18:30? That's, no, that's 6:30, sorry. I, I don't work on military time very often. So, and it hits the Transit Center, which is downtown. It'll hit Will Detmer Park, Ivy Tech, Simtra, Garden Hill Mobile Home Park, and then back to the Transit Center. That's the, that's the loop.
That's great. Thank you.
There's the route for anyone at home that's wondering about this. Let's see, I had Counselor Crossley, then I'll go Iverson.
I was gonna say, this is exciting and happy to support this. I have, I'm not certain if this person is watching or, because I don't see her here. But I had a very good conversation with a constituent last week during Election Day and she was trying to figure out federal dollars and all of these different things. And we had the conversation of transit and she had mentioned how there is no transit that goes to Ivy Tech and she's a mom. And, you know, getting access to this particular area was an issue. And, and she was just trying to figure out like, you know, all different things. And I had expressed, when we think about all politics are local, we talked about how the federal funding trickled down into local municipalities and how the mayor can rescue plan dollars that the council and commissioners actually worked towards and approved, and which is what we're doing here tonight, will actually work towards this. So I just wanted to, you know, definitely say I'm, I'm very much in support of this. And, and again, this is to folks that are watching, this is how federal funding dollars were trickled down into local municipalities and is working for the greater good of the community. And this is a really big step in a lot of areas that people will be able to catch this from. So I'm excited and ready to vote on it.
Counsel Iverson?
Michelle, would you please pull up page, what is that, 73? And this is the map, I think, that was being referenced earlier. The green portion is what we're talking about and expanding the route out. And if you notice, the section that's going north, I believe, is Curry Pike. I think if you've driven out there, there's a lot of construction going on out there. There's a lot of jobs coming in out there. And that's really exciting that this is not only going to Ivy Tech, but it's also going to all of those employers with all those, those, those jobs out there. So I'm very supportive of this. And of course, this being the first time that we've had a contract with Bloomington Transit, this helps with single rider folks and helps improve the, the climate. And this really helps further some of our climate resiliency goals, which we're really excited about. And I think I'm really looking forward to seeing a contract that lasts more than a year coming forward. And of course, the devil's in the details, but this is a great first step.
It's a really good point. Let's see, we'll go to Counselor Wiltz.
Yeah, I want to labor the point. But I had, had a neighbor several years ago who attended Ivy Tech and it took him two hours to get to Ivy Tech each, each way. Because there wasn't a bus, you know, he'd pick a bus up and get downtown and get as far out and then walk. And this, you know, he's moved on to bigger and better things at this point. But you know what? This is, it's a long time coming. And I'm really excited that we're getting this done and ready to start figuring out how to fund it next go around.
You're gonna figure it out for us, Counselor Wiltz. I'm excited to hear it. And you do.
Wait, what?
Counselor McKim?
No, I, I, everybody knows I'm enthusiastically in support of this. I just wanted to say, the answer is the economic development lit. I mean, EDI Lit is, this is absolutely economic development. And so, yeah, I think we definitely, assuming that we can, we can fine tune this program so that it really works for everybody. I think we do have a funding source for the future.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes, I've been watching for years the need to figure out transportation out to Ivy Tech. For a lot of years, we had to be concerned because the ridership numbers was assisting rural transit to be able to survive. You know, obviously, so many of those rules have changed. And so I'm glad to see that we have this available for one year. I cannot imagine that we will say that there is money in economic development, once we've used economic development to assist our law enforcement. But perhaps there's more money there than anybody believes will be possible. But certainly, that, that is a primary use of those dollars, in my opinion, so that we do not completely destroy what we've done to bring our law enforcement to almost full capacity. But wouldn't it be lovely for those people who are, who become accustomed to having transit to, to get for schooling or be able to get for employment? There's a large employment base there. And so that would absolutely be delightful if we could make that work. And maybe if the people that are being, the, the employers that see the difference, maybe they will kick in to cover some of this. I discussed this, once again, I'll mention my daughter. She has, in the facility where she lives, right on the water in Adventure Park, but there is free ridership there to go to all these different places. And I said, well, who's paying for that? And she said, all of the people who have the shopping centers, who have all of that, they pay the, the full amount. The individuals aren't paying it. It is a free ride. So, and this is not a, a, an impoverished neighborhood that she lives in. So, but just to be able to know if you had car trouble or whatever, you have a way of getting to where you need to go. So hopefully we can work out something like that.
Yeah. We will have to figure out the funding. And so all of our partners out there on that route, if you've got some suggestions and ideas and your folks like that, we sure welcome that. We would welcome your input on that. I know we've got BDC partners that maybe can help us with that, but it is good growth. Right? Any further discussion? Let's do a good thing, I believe, and go to public comment on this first. If you have comment here in the Nat U Hill, come forward, raise your hand on teams. Seeing none. Let's go to do that roll call.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Okay. And counsel, just so you know what I'm gonna do here, I'm gonna, we'll get through Mr. Cockrell. You've got one more, or Ms. Purdy. You've got one. We're gonna get, we're gonna get Ms. Hamlin. And then we're gonna take care of Youth Services Bureau. And then we're gonna take a bathroom break, if that's okay. And then I think that clears the room of, of department heads roughly. And then we can return to the council items. So Ms. Purdy's is next, so we'll go to you.
You got it. Counsel, I move to approve the Board of Commissioners' request for an additional appropriation and fund 1,000-0160- and fund 1,000-0161 County General County Buildings and the amount of 5,500 in the Supplies category and 203, $203,400 in the Services category for a total appropriation of 208,900.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Now, I would like to propose a reduction in those numbers in review of our budget. I believe that the fuel line at 500 can be reduced to 250. We need to keep the cleaning supplies at 5,000. Trash pickup of 6,000. Utilities, 64,000. And the service contracts reduce that to 23,000. So it would give you a, in the twenties, a total of 5,250, and in the thirties, 93,000 for a total of 98,250.
If we make those, move we amend the motion to set the Supplies category to 5250 and the Services category to 93,000.
Second.
All right, we've got an amendment before us, any discussion? It reduces, that's good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're back to the underlying. Anything else, and you're in, Ms. Purdy.
Um, no, I don't believe so. I think I had indicated previously that we have taken on the Utilities for the Showers Building, and that is not the sole reason for, for our current request. And I do want to take this opportunity to put a plug in for what the Auditor's Office is providing us. Ashley Thomas is creating a spreadsheet such that the financial managers can go into the budget. And for ours, it would be like, this is what our expenditures have been at this first quarter, and then it would be divided by the, by the month. That gives you the average. Then you can figure out if, based on that current spending rate, if you're gonna have sufficient funding throughout the rest of the year or if you are not. Obviously, things change as we're going through, utilities kind of change up and down. But I'm really looking forward to it, because I believe it will help avoid me having to come and see you guys all the time. So, kudos to the Auditor's Office.
We thought you liked seeing us. All right.
I love seeing you.
Comments, questions from councilors? Counselor Wiltz.
Yeah, I just, in the narrative where it says that, that we're taking on extra expenses because Olympus is no longer paying that, paying them, is that, is there like a reduction in what we're paying Olympus?
Okay, no. So, um, so what was intended by the, when this was submitted, I didn't write it. What's intended is that in the past, there had been enough rental or lease agreement payments coming in that they were able to actually use that, those payments to pay for the utilities. Now that we have a reduced numbers of people actually leasing space in the Showers Building, they're, they're not receiving enough funds to cover those costs.
That's what I thought you had said last time, but then I read this. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other comments? Counselor Hawke.
Yes, I can remember full well when, let's see, let's see, a council member or commissioner at the time, Mark Stoops, was standing there with this big piece of cardboard that was supposed to represent a $200,000 check. And if we would just buy this portion of that building, we were gonna literally make an extra $200,000 that we could put in County General, so we would just be rolling in the dough. That was back when $200,000 was worth a lot of money. It still is, but for some reason, it doesn't seem quite as large now as it did at the time. But this just says, a part of what happens with county government, you make decisions that each year that goes by, you look at the decision you made, and there's little things that chip away or add to, and it's never stays the same. So if you want something to stay the same, you don't get involved with county government because that's not what happens.
Thank you very much, Counselor Hawke. Other comments or questions?
It's funny, I actually had a conversation with somebody just today about that giant novelty check.
He is just so proud of himself, $30,000. I didn't, I didn't support buying that either, so.
Let's, if there's no other comments from council, let's see if anyone in the public has a comment on this at all. If you do, raise your hand on teams or come forward in the NatU Hill. Seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor McCam.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
I will go to the prosecutor's office, they've been waiting.
Counsel, I move to approve the prosecutor's request for the creation of a new account lines and fund 8123-9625 STOP grant as outlined on the agenda and simultaneously approve additional appropriations and the amount of 129,273.42 in the Personnel category.
Oh, no, mine's going, so.
You take it away, run this meeting.
Um, yes, this is a request to appropriate our annual funding for the STOP grant that funds 50% of salary and, and part of the benefits for a sex crime deputy prosecutor and a domestic violence deputy prosecutor. The balance, the other 50% is paid out of the PS Lit, and that meets our grant match, which is a requirement of 43,087.48. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, let's see if we've got any questions, comments from couns, councilors.
Thank you for your patience.
I also want to note that our departments go after grant dollars that, for dollars we could not otherwise do for ourselves, but would want to, particularly around these two core areas. So thanks for your diligence in doing that and of course, sitting through our longer meeting. Counselor Hawke.
Right, I just want to add that what this is actually doing is committing also that we're going to use, once again, public safety lit for these other positions. And I'm not saying that positions aren't really wonderful to have and, and something that we need to be doing, but it also reduces the amount that, once again, when we start reducing our public safety lit, which really should be supporting our public safety, which in my opinion, I know I'll get disagreements, but we need to make sure we're covering what we have to cover for the Sheriff's Department and for the jail. But I certainly will support this because who wouldn't, you know? But.
Other comments or questions? Thank you again for waiting and all this. We'll go to public comments. If you have comments on this, please come forward in the NatU Hill or raise your hand on team. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Wiltz, I jumped you on the.
I just had a, a comment. And it said, did you know that the county prosecuting attorney, the prosecutor, is the lead law enforcement official of the county? Which just popped in my head.
Very true. I know that.
I knew you probably knew that, but still, it popped in my head when you were talking, and I thought I'd share it, because I, that's just a perspective.
Somebody at home wrote it down, you got your trivia and.
Yep.
And she did a great job.
Sure that would be asked.
We're very excited about her. Other comments, councilors? All right, let's see if the public's got any comments. Come forward in the NatU Hill or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, let's go to, can I do a voice vote on this? I can't, can I? No, it's never one I think I want to. All right, let's do a roll call, sorry.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor McCam.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Great, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Let's go to item 12, Youth Services Bureau has also been patiently waiting.
So we'll go to that.
Counsel, I move to approve the Youth Services Bureau's request for the creation of a new account lines and fund 9111-9625 1503 YSB grant as outlined on the agenda and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations and the amount of 41,282 in the Personnel category and 1,578 in the Services category for a total appropriation of 42,860.
Second.
All right, Ms. Schmidt, thanks for waiting, and I'll hand it to you.
Thank you, Counsel. Vanessa Schmidt, Youth Services Bureau Deputy Director. Yes, I'm just here to ask for the creation of these new account lines and simultaneously approve our Youth Services Bureau grant from the Indiana Youth Services Association. Like stated, this grant funds approximately half of our case manager's salary, along with associated benefits, as well as some part-time supplemental money for our part-time shelter staff, and then a little bit of training and travel.
All right. Thank you very much. Questions, comments from councilors? Seen a lot of head shaking. Looks like we have none. Let's go to, and they, thank you again for going after grant dollars. That is, again, huge. It helps us do things we could not otherwise do very well. Let's go to public comment. If you haven't come forward here in the NatU Hill, raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counsel Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor McCam.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Counsel, I move to approve the Youth Service Bureau's request for an additional appropriations and fund 4100-0000 donations, youth shelter, and the amount of 2,500 in the Supplies category.
Second.
All right, Ms. Schmidt.
Thank you, Counsel. Again, just here to request appropriation of some of our existing donation funds. Most of these funds will be used directly towards the shelter residents, especially during the Christmas time. This will be some supplemental money for Christmas gifts, as well as some groundwork that we need done, and then supplies for our community programming.
Any questions, comments from councilors? Okay. Looking, seeing none, let's go to public comment. If you have public comment, come forward in the NatU Hill or raise your hand on teams. All right, seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor McCam.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
All right, I think that's it. Thank you, Ms. Schmidt.
Thank you, Counsel.
All right, councilors, we're gonna take a little bit of a seven-minute stretch here so councilors can go to the restroom, come back. So it is 7:01. Let's be back at 7:08, and we will get this meeting through the rest of the agenda. We are in recess.[1385.32]
Hello?
Testing one, two, three. Testing one, two.
Yay!
It's a Christmas miracle.
All right. All right, thank you, T S D. You are heroes. Thanks to the public that waited. We are now back. And I got a message there. Dave Burnworth says, yes, he can hear us. Awesome. Now, I gotta remember where we're at.
Thirteen.
We've gotta start back at thirteen.
Yep.
We need to start back up with one.
Location. I can't recreate all my comments. All right, Counselor Crossley.
Counsel, I move to approve the request of the Auditor's Office and Courts to amend the F L S A status of the following positions from exempt to non-exempt as they will be impacted by the changes effective January first, 2025. One, Court, Family Court Coordinator, Courts Department. Two, General Ledger and Grants Manager, Auditor's Office. And three, Internal Auditor, Auditor's Office.
And we will return back to Ms. Turner King to tell us what we're doing here.
So in July of this year, we identified positions that were going to be impacted by the January first, 2025 change in the F L S A law, which changes the minimum to be paid to exempt employees. Since identifying those positions impacted, we have done various things to try to adjust the positions to meet F L S A standards or guidance. With these positions, we talked to the department heads, that being the presiding judge in court administrations and the auditor, to see if it made sense for them to become non-exempt. Because as a reminder, you can change a position from exempt to non-exempt, but not vice versa. And with these positions, the department heads felt that it was manageable if the positions became non-exempt.
All right, thank you very much. Questions, comments for Ms. Turner King? Thank you for taking us back through that.
Trying to remember what I was gonna ask you. Oh. Moving this person to non-exempt, so I'm looking at the Family Courts Coordinator. They're at thirty-five hours. Is there a reason, was there a consideration of making that person forty so that that would be?
The pay, the salary for a Patsy at forty hours still wouldn't meet the F L S A non-exempt or the F L S A standards. So moving them to thirty-five or forty doesn't cure the issue. And so we did propose that to the courts, but they thought thirty-five and non-exempt was appropriate given that case or given that position.
But if you moved it to forty, that's five extra hours that...
You're still below the minimum.
Yes, my point is there wouldn't be overtime.
We'd still have to do something. I mean, true. But I mean, I think when they looked at it, they said in the last six months, the person had two hours of comp time, so it wasn't close to...
Okay.
Other comments or questions from counselors? I'm looking. I think this was the point last time where I said counselors. I know it's been a long night. Anything else on this one? Okay. Let's go to public comment on item thirteen A and B, I believe it's combined, right?
Correct.
If you have comments, come forward here in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams. All right. Just make sure here. Okay, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous. And I want to mention for the record that Counselor Hawke did leave the meeting.
Thank you. Let's go on now to item C.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request to amend nine job descriptions outlined on the agenda to add to statement must have a minimum of three years' experience serving as a probation officer. Adding the statement to the description ensures the compensation for these positions will remain above the F L S A compensation minimum that will be effective January first, 2025.
So this is another group of positions that was identified as being impacted by the F L S A changes. In speaking to probation, most, all of these positions are director or supervisor positions. And so they had identified that they wouldn't place any one of those positions who didn't have three years of experience since they're supervising other caseloads and probation officers. So adding the suggested language to their job description ties it to a three-year salary for a probation officer, which will be above the F L S A minimum.
Questions, comments from counsel?
And I will also add that there isn't any direct fiscal impact from this because all the individuals who occupy these positions already have more than three years of experience.
Comments or questions, counselors? Seeing none. Let's go to public comment. If you have it, come forward in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams. All right, seeing no public comment, let's go to a roll call, please.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson? Motion passed unanimous.
All right, let's move on to item D.
Counsel, I move to approve the request to amend the 2025 salary ordinance and fund one thousand dash zero three zero nine Employee Services Account Line fifteen one sixteen from Personnel Administration Administrator Pat D, exempt to H R Director, exempt to A, exempt Account Line one zero zero eight nine from Employee Services, comment C, non-exempt to H R Assistant Director Pat D, non-exempt, Account Line one zero zero two four from Payroll Administrator to Payroll Administrator Compensation and Compliance, Pat C, non-exempt, and add Account Line one zero zero eight eight Payroll Administrator Attendance and Benefits, forty hours, Pat C, non-exempt. These amendments were approved at the October twenty-eighth council meeting for the 2024 salary ordinance.
Second.
All right, we'll go to counsel comments, questions or discussion. Actually, Ms. Turner King or Michelle, rather. Anything you want to add here?
Yes, we, and I say we, counsel approved adding these positions to the 2024 salary ordinance. At that time, I didn't even think about it. So these also then need to be moved forward to the 2025 salary ordinance. So that's, this is a housekeeping, moving these items forward.
Yes. Seeing no other comments from counselors, scanning the room. Any comments from the public? If you do, come forward in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams. Counselor McKim's got a comment.
And I'm sorry, I am gonna vote no on this one. Just I, I'm not yet ready to add that new position, so.
Yeah. There's, and there's been continued discussion on all the priorities that we still have to get done, and I appreciate counselors thinking through that. Any other comments? All right, let's see if the public has a comment. If you do, raise your hand or come forward here in the Nat U Hill. Raise your hand on teams or come forward in the Nat U Hill. Okay. Let's go to a roll call vote on this.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor McKim? Counselor Crossley? Motion passes four to one, and it will need a second reading.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to E.
Counsel, I move to approve the request to amend 2025 salary ordinance and fund one thousand dash zero 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 two County General Auditor, Account Line one zero zero one six from Accounts Payable Administrator, Pat B, non-exempt to Accounts Payable Director, Pat C, non-exempt, and Account Line one zero zero one seven from Assistant County Financial Director, Pat A, non-exempt to Accounts Payable Financial Administrator, Pat B, non-exempt. These amendments were approved at the October twenty-eighth council meeting for the 2024 salary ordinance.
Michelle, you want to add anything?
Second. Thank you. Thank you very much.
No, this is the same situation. They were approved for 2024. These will allow us to add them to the 2025 salary ordinance.
All right. Thank you very much. Again, cleaning this up. Anything else? All right, let's go to public comment. If you have it, come forward in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, let's go on to F.
Counsel, I move to approve the request to amend the 2025 salary ordinance and fund eleven ninety-seven dash zero 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 Stormwater Management, Account Line one zero zero seven six, M S four Assistant, Pat C, non-exempt, to Stormwater Specialist, Pat C, non-exempt, and add Account Line one eleven zero six six Stormwater Technician, Pat B, non-exempt. These amendments were approved at the October twenty-eighth council meeting for the 2024 salary ordinance.
Second.
Anything here?
It's the same scenario. We added these at the last meeting, and so we're just needing to add it to the 2025 salary ordinance.
Okay. Counselors, do you wish to make any comments or ask any questions? All right. Seeing none, let's go to public comment. If you have it, come forward here in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
All right, let's move on to G.
Counsel, I move to approve the request to amend the 2025 salary ordinance, Merit Poll Union C, fourteen-year step increase grid to reflect the correct biweekly amount, three thousand seven hundred fifty-two dollars and eighty cents, and the approximate amount, annual amount of ninety-seven thousand five hundred seventy-three dollars.
Second.
All right, we'll go now to Michelle.
Departments are filling out their 2025 new payroll change forms, and during that process, it was pointed out that there was a formula error. This is create, just to correct that formula error for that particular one grid.
From the previous budget adoption, salary ordinance adoption.
Right. When we adopted it on the...
One budget ends and it begins to be amended.
Yep.
Other comments, questions from counselors? All right. Let's go to public comment. If you have any, come forward in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson? Motion passes unanimous.
All right, let's move on. That's it? My heavens. All right. By the way, I just real quick wanted to say to council staff, Ms. Turner King, thank you for working through that to clean that up so that that is right because it can't be wrong. And so those technical matters do matter very much, so thank you very much. I also don't think I ever thought, thanked you on the mic during the budget, all of you, the budget, including the auditor, who's always a positive presence in all this. I don't think I said anything about that, or I'm not sure we did. I think we probably were confused and lost and we'd worked hard. But we thank you very much for all this because getting it right, again, is, is a huge matter. So thank you so much, all of you. We'll go to counsel comments, and I kind of kicked that off already with my own. Counselor McKim?
Yeah, thank you. So we all know that the, the city in passing their salary ordinances gave their police officers a fairly substantial raise, which is now going to put us in a bind. I think we've already received a proposal. Has everybody, everybody received that in email, right? A proceeding?
Yes, yeah.
A proposal from Chief Deputy Phil Parker. I, I really think we need to move forward on giving our, making sure that our merit deputies remain competitive, their salaries remain competitive. I think, I guess what I would suggest is that at our next meeting, we put that on the agenda for a discussion, but not a decision. So we're not on the, you know, we're kind of, we don't have the pressure of a vote that night. But I think we need, we do need to move more quickly rather than more slowly on it. So I really, I hope that everybody is willing to take a look at the information that Phil provided, to also ask the council office for any additional data that, that you need before, you know, making a decision and at least be ready to discuss what we need to do to be able to potentially address the competitive disadvantage that we're now going to be in at our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other counsel comments? Counselor Iverson?
Yes, I certainly hope that the public has been paying attention to the future cast that's coming out of the Kelly School of Business here at Indiana University. They were talking a lot about how Indiana is doing well, how the nation is doing well, but that Monroe County is lagging behind. In particular, they noted three things. Number one, depopulation. We are not doing enough to capture and retain our working age population. The second thing is that Monroe County salaries lag behind comparable areas. And the third thing is that productivity measures in Monroe County lag behind other areas. This is not news for those who have been paying attention, but it is certainly something that this council, I think, should be focused on as we go into the future because we certainly need to be looking at some of these areas because it will very seriously impact our and future council's abilities to make difficult decisions with adequate resources. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Iverson. Other counsel comments? All right. Well, I appreciate everybody's diligence through everything. I do want to kind of respond to Counselor McKim's good advice here. I, along with Counselor Crossley and Counselor Wiltz, had, I think, a very helpful meeting with some of our deputies about the issue that was discussed about the city's change. We didn't envision any of that about two to three weeks ago when we were debating or looking at potential for, I think it was a hundred and eighty thousand dollar pension plan that we could not afford then. One of the things I expressed to the deputies are the immense gratitude that we have for all that they do. Our deputies are tremendous. In fact, we've had one with us most of the evening tonight. That's usually the case, and I always appreciate that consideration that the sheriff gives us. That said, I want to know, in the last two years, council has worked with, going beyond just words that are gratitude, with action as far as salaries. And that includes a thirty-one point seven percent increase in a two-year period of time. That was appropriate for that time. What I've also expressed to the deputies is that this council, in an open discussion, should have a funding source for any remedy and a proposal for any remedy. And I would like to hear counselors talk a little bit about those funding sources so that we can have a productive discussion. I don't think the discussion about whether or not we love our deputies is necessarily the discussion. I think it's funding sources, what can you do, what is appropriate, et cetera. And so we'll keep working in that vein towards productive solutions. And if counselors have ideas on that, now'd be your time to get the pencil out and to figure it out. I have looked at our budget, talked with our staff, and as we noted at the passage of our budget, we were right at a, essentially a paper deficit. Now, I paid my property taxes, and I don't know what's coming in, but that we got to figure out. We cannot leave that to the side. So let's keep figuring that out. It's not a no, but it's a what can we figure out towards that effort? Because I want that to be a productive discussion that benefits both us, the deputies, and a solution. Okay. Counsel, Kim Shell? I almost gave you a demotion there.
I know. I just wanted to let the entire council know that Counselor Deckard, as well as Counselor McKim, has asked for us to double-check, you did in a text a long time ago when it first came out, the numbers that was sent. And so we are breaking down the merit deputy fiscal impact. And so we're going to have it divided up with regards to, you know, what is it going to cost the general fund and where people are actually going to be in their step increases so you can see actually where everybody's at. Because we can't compare to the city per se because they have a totally different salary grid base. So it's like comparing apples to oranges. And so all I can do is go, this is where we're at, and, you know, kind of thing. So I will have all that information. I'm just waiting on, Courtney's on vacation, but I want her to double-check our numbers and that stuff before I send it on out to you, so.
All right. I think we've done what we can do. Did somebody else have something over there? We okay? Thanks, everybody. And thank you, T S D. Thank you, cats. You all earned checks tonight, let me tell you. And speaking of checks, thank you so much. With that, we are adjourned.
I don't know how. Yes.